Welcome to the early work session on Howlwood City Council. Today is Tuesday, March the 26th, and the meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. Item number, oh, well, she's going to do her fire station tour, but our mayor for the day is Ms. Charlie Hill. She's a fourth grader at Highland Woods Elementary, so she'll be with us when we reconvene, I guess in regular mean. Item number one on the agenda is to receive a presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2022-2023. Mr. Herman?
Mayor Council, we made it through another year. This year is a little bit more challenging for us. We had one of our principal people out for a while on medical leave, and so we kind of had to all pull together and kind of get through it, and, you know, the auditors worked with us, and we got there. So it's, I'm pleased that we were able to get this in on time, and it's a good report. With that, you maybe not have full credibility here for me. I'll let you hear from our auditors and let them tell you the real story here. We have Clayton Rogers from our auditing firm, Potey Brown, here, and he'll give you kind of an overview. You may remember from last year, he provided the summary as well, but he'll kind of give you the skinny on what this year was all about, and I'll just turn it over to him.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor Council, thank you for having me, and thank you for having me back. It says a lot, at least to me personally, that I did show up last year, and I was asked to come back. That's always a good sign. As Ken said, I'm here to talk about the results of your fiscal year 2023 audit, and answer any questions that you might have about the audit process or the financial statements that are in front of you. As Ken said, there were some challenges this year. I am here to tell you that government finance has not gotten any easier in the last year. But first and foremost, I'd like to thank all of the city staff that we worked with, not just in finance, but when we talked to people in court or utility billing, looking at internal controls, really everyone at the city that we worked with was very helpful, extremely responsive, and got us everything that we needed to be able to finish the audit on time. So you'll have several documents standing in front of you, or sitting in front of you, rather. I'm not going to go over all of them in a lot of detail, but I'd like to describe each one of them to you. First of all, you'll have a separate letter. I'm not going to go over this in detail. This is, in our role as your auditor, there's a number of things in our professional standards that we'd be required to disclose to you. If we had found significant problems with the books, if we had had big disagreements with management, if we had found fraud, those would be things that we'd be required to disclose to the city council. Spoiler alert, it was a clean audit, and so this letter is boilerplate and reads almost identical to last year, the biggest change being the dates. Going in the, up the Verizon bars order of size of these documents, you should also have a bound copy of the city's single audit report. And the single audit report, I'll just touch on briefly, you actually get a two-for-one special for your audit opinion. What this document contains is the results of the federal single audit, and because the city, the cities actually didn't have one of these for a long time, and then had one several years in a row now, because of the amount of federal money that it spent, it triggers what's called a federal single audit. And if you open this document up to page six, page six is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, say that five times fast. This is a document that shows what federal money the city spent during fiscal year 23. Because that total at the bottom is bigger than $750,000, the city was exposed to this compliance audit, so just like the financial statement audit, where we're rendering an opinion on the financials being materially correct, in this case, in this compliance audit, we're dealing with the city's compliance with certain federal programs. So there's obviously one really big one here, it's your ARPA funding. And so what we do is that, for your ARPA funding, we do kind of a deep dive on that program. We don't look at every single thing, we don't look at every string that the federal government attaches to that money. What we're concerned with is what would be material, what would be something that if the city didn't comply with, if they spent it on the wrong thing, or if they didn't meet this particular clause of the grant agreement, what would be something Treasury would care about? And at the end of that audit, we rendered an opinion, and I'm happy to say that it is an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. So what that means is that based on our audit over the ARPA program, the city did materially comply with all the things that were in those compliance requirements that we looked at. Since we're dealing with taxpayer funds, the federal government doesn't want you to have good things happen by accident. So under the Single Audit Act, we would be required to also disclose to you if there had been any control issues over compliance with that program. So in other words, not just that the city didn't do anything wrong with the Fed's money, but that you had controls in place to make sure that you did. So if there had been problems in that area, we'd be required to report them, but fortunately, everything that we looked at was good, the city's documentation and processes and controls were in order, and we were, so we were able to issue no findings on that front as well. So going to the big book that we have, the annual comprehensive financial report. Now, this document is 108 pages. I figured I'd spend about five minutes per page, if that's okay? Now, if you're not a numbers person, this can be a very dry read. In fact, some of you might be inclined to take it home and leave it on your bedside in case you were ever overcome with insomnia. However, there's a lot of really good information in this document, and it is probably the single most important piece of financial information that the city puts out every year. To that point, you'll start by jumping with me to page roman numeral 13. What you'll find on that page is the GFOA certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And this is an award that the cities, that this document receives, and that the city received it again for fiscal year 22. We fully expect that it will again be eligible this year. And I think the most important thing that I'd like to emphasize about the city striving for that award year after year is that no one makes them do it, it's not required. In fact, because the city wants to make this document eligible for it, the report's probably about between 30 and 40 pages longer than it would otherwise be. Especially in the back of the report, there's lots of 10-year comparative information, actually some of the more interesting stuff in the report, statistics about fund balance, sales tax, some of those types of things. And I think that speaks to the city being committed to not just doing the minimum, but putting out information that has lots of information available and is in context. So kudos to the city on another successful year of that. If you'll go a few pages back with me to page one, on page one, we have the independent auditor's report. And just to reiterate, the city's management is responsible for this document and everything that's in it. Our responsibility is to audit it. We do assist with preparing the document, it's quite customary, lots of governments do that, but that ultimately, it's management that's responsible that this be right, our responsibility is to determine if management got the information right. You'll see there in the top of the page in the second paragraph, we're able to render an unmodified opinion on the financial statements as well. So what that means is that based on our audit, these financial statements, we believe are materially correct. So materially correct, again, it's, the emphasis is on decision making. That doesn't mean that every dollar is right, that doesn't mean perfect, we certainly don't look at every dollar or every transaction. Ken would hate to have us out as much of the year as it would take to get to that level of assurance, but it's a pretty high bar based on our audit. And that, what that means is that there's nothing in our opinion that's inaccurate or omitted that would affect your decision making or the decision making of other people, especially your debt holders who would be looking at this report. So just a quick summary, I've hit on really the audit piece of this so far. Two audit opinions, one over the financial statements, clean opinion, no findings. Opinion number two is over federal compliance with the ARPA funds, clean opinion, no findings. That is the highest outcome that we could, that we could come to for this, for this audit. So again, there's a number of things that I could touch on in this document, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions, but I want to just hit on a couple of highlights that you might find of particular note. Let's start, if you will, go back with me, about 10 pages back to 16 and 17. If you took one thing away from what I'm saying here, it's that professionally, there's not anything in here that I would consider to be a surprise. It was a really smooth audit, management gave us everything we needed, we had basically no adjustments to the numbers that were dropped into this report. And really, the things, the information that you would find in here that looks strange or different than what you're used to seeing throughout the year, is stuff that only shows up in this document once a year. And this statement here on 16 and 17, the statement of net position, is basically an entity-wide balance sheet for the city, full accruals, so basically every single thing that a private company might have on their financials is being presented here. So on the left side, you can see capital assets, middle of the page. On the right side of the page, you can see long-term debt, the TMRS pension liability, some of those types of numbers that really only appear in a financial statement in this page and on the next page. But again, there's nothing really unusual or different. There was a new standard this year related to booking liabilities for software, I won't put you all to sleep by describing what was involved in that. But I think it does illustrate, the Gatsby's been on a big liability streak the last 10 or 15 years, wanting to see, make sure that, is there anything that especially your bondholders, when they look at this document, to see what else is the city on the hook for? Let's put everything on there that they might be concerned with. And even despite all of those things, the city is reporting positive net position in spite of all those unfunded liabilities, and again, no real huge massive issues or changes there. If you flip a few pages back, pages 20 and 21, you'll see the fund financial statements, which are, on a basis of accounting, much closer to what you've seen with the budget throughout the year. We have the general fund, the capital projects fund, and then all your other governmental funds rolled into one column. I'd like to draw attention just to one, probably the biggest highlight we get asked about the most. The bottom of page 20, you'll see unassigned fund balance in the general fund on the left side, just over $9 million. The question we always get asked is, well, how are we doing? And while, as the auditor, it's not necessarily my job to tell you how you're doing, I can say that however you were thinking that you probably were, these numbers are not different than what you've been seeing. So if we flip back to page 23, just a couple of page flips back to the income statement, the most basic metric is we take that $9 million on the side in the general fund, divide it into expenditures, left side, middle of page 23, 20.8 million, and it's between five and six months of reserves in the general fund. Keep in mind, that's also for this document only, we even back out, the city adopted a little deficit for fiscal year 24, so that we even back out that planned deficit from unassigned fund balance. If you threw that amount back in, it would be over six months in reserves. Most cities' policies is about 90 days, that's about what GFOA recommends as well. So six months is certainly not excessive, but would be what most of the Intellectual Trade Organization publications would say, that's a really good place to be in most cases. I'll go a few pages back, are the enterprise fund statements that tell basically the same story. You've got roughly right at, I believe it's just a little under 12 months, in fact, let's go ahead and take a look there, just so I don't lie to you. Page 26, no, I'm sorry, 27. Page 27, unrestricted net position of the utility fund, 6.3 million if we look to the right side. Operating expenses, we take out depreciation, we are, it's a little less than a year, but it's still even over the six-month threshold. So the takeaway there, not to make it all about the numbers, the reserves are what would be considered healthy, and they're not anything that's different than what you've been seeing throughout the year. So I'd be happy, as I close, to answer any questions you might have, or if there's something that, any questions you have about the financials or any aspect of them, or anything about the audit process?
Just had a question on pensions.
Mm-hmm. I love a good pension question.
I haven't stated early. To deferred outflows of resources, 4.5, and a couple pages later, it was on, you know, declined his pensions. What does that really mean? Is that a...
Which page are you looking at? I'm sorry, which page are you on?
Page six.
Page six, okay, all the way up front. Yeah, so the deferred outflows, there are certain things that the pension liabilities, the actuary are making a best guess about what the future benefits are, but there's certain things that when they make changes to those guesses, they don't want it to all hit the income statement in one year, but it's not really an asset, it's not really a liability, because you're not going to pay anything. So deferred outflows and deferred inflows are essentially a parking lot to where we change the pension liability, but we're going to park this effect of that on the balance sheet for a while and amortize it to the income statement over time. So that we can see there that in the middle of the page, the deferred outflows went up quite a bit, from 1.6 to 5.1 million. And we can see a table in the notes that makes that up.
Page 49.
Yeah, it said pensions.
Yep. So on page 49, you'll see a few components that make up the deferred outflows for pensions, the biggest piece being the, related to investment earnings. As we all know, the market fluctuates quite a bit, and because there's a lot of money invested with TMRS that's offsetting that actuarial liability, what they're trying to do is actually kind of smooth out, so that they probably were using one set of market assumptions when the market was really good, and that as interest rates have risen or things have changed, they, the changes in what discount or market rate they're using will really affect that pension liability, but they don't want to run it all through pension expense, so that's that number you're seeing there, that they're just parking that three and a half million there, and then going to amortize it over a closed period.
Okay.
Anybody else? I'm looking on the TMRS liability. Further back, there's some comparative information showing it over time. Don't be alarmed if you see, or when you see that the liability went up almost tenfold, that was what it did at every single city that participated in TMRS. And I don't necessarily, I would hesitate to say that that's indicative of a trend. It's gone down the last few years, it went up a lot this last year, and it's probably going to continue moving cyclically like that. I'm sorry? A lot of it is changes in the market, that when TMRS's assets do well, the actuaries adjust their discount rates, which is when they're looking at that liability way over time. Not only does that, do the assets that TMRS is investing go up or down, because they did actually lose a little this last year, they also then make some changes to what they assume the liability is going to be in the future.
Question on the transmital letter.
Yes, sir.
On page two, talk about significant risks considered. Is that boilerplate? When you identify one that management override or controls is a significant risk area.
It is.
Do you do that on every audit?
Yes, so management override of controls is something that auditors are required to assume pervasively exists at every entity of any type anywhere. If you went and looked at the city of Dallas's audit, or Apple Computer, all of their auditors have to assume that there's a risk that management could override well-made controls. That's not to say that we found any issues in that front, we were simply saying...
But this is one you specifically are going to look at it and...
Exactly.
I know that comes up in our quarterly assertion that we have to sign, if we know of any overrides or any other risks. Okay.
Absolutely, great question. Anybody else?
Thank you. Good news for sure.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to say kudos to Ken and team, you know, for us, to be serving on the council, and we've got an report that says this, and when that gets you brought back for the next year, great job, Ken, great job to your team.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you.
I told the story at Stabby the other day, because one of the members of staff was out, it was pretty difficult with Ken and Michael and everybody else. And on a Monday following one week, Ken told me that that was the longest and worst week he'd had in a long time, or one or the other, and then I mentioned that in the stabbing the other day, and I said, which one was? And he said, well, it was both of them. But they, they did work very hard and did a great job, and Heather, even from home at the very end, was helping.
The report been great, but just how we got there, I mean, the financial condition of the city, okay? It's just like, look for a hole, we can't find a hole. You know, it's got to be one somewhere, so, you know, we don't want to be complacent, but it's good.
Good work, I agree.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next up, item number two, receive an update on information services operations and projects. Sunny Lindsay.
Well, I don't know if my, my time's going to be any more exciting than that. May want to grab some caffeine in between. So I just want to kind of touch base on some of the projects we've got coming up, and in response to Councilwoman Hurst's request for information on data and the things that we do with some of the data that we have. So I'll just go ahead and get jumped in. So the first thing I do want to say is I have to give a huge shout out to my team. I have Keith Pennick, our network manager, here with me tonight, but it is my entire team that makes all of this possible. They are amazing, they work very, very hard, and I just, they make me look good. So I just want to give a huge shout out to my team. So as you know, technology is everywhere, we'd love to get away from it, but we really can't, so the best thing we can do is manage it to the best of our abilities. The department strives to provide services in a fiscally conscious manner. We are very gracious for all the support the council provides, and with that, we try to be as studious and judicious as we can with those funds. We have implemented a number of new processes over the last couple of years, including network scanning, email scanning, both internally and externally, and then we also work with the Department of, DHS for also doing external scans of our ports, any of the open ports that we have. So those are all scanned. We get scan, internal and external scans are done every single day, the ports are scanned every single week, and we get reports and, you know, make adjustments as needed. Incident response, we do have an incident response plan, it's about 10 to 12 pages long, but the plan does involve several departments, because we are a support service, we rely on a lot of other departments to be partners with us in this case, if there is an incident. Finance, for sure, with our TML, they're the ones who provide our cybersecurity insurance, communications, public safety. If we need to open a ticket with the FBI, we, obviously, the police will be involved with that, fire will be involved if we have to open the EOC, so we can get direct state resources. We also have interlocal agreements with a lot of the cities around here, we've signed those a number of years ago, and so I have one phone number I can call, and several of the cities can jump in and assist us as needed. Incident recovery, because once we have an incident, the first thing we want to do obviously is to recover from that, that would include a lot of obvious briefings to management, to council, to the public as needed. Recovery would include, of course, many partners, including communications, letting the residents know, you know, if an event happened and how it affected them, and again, you know, our external partners and our internal partners as well. Our first line of defense is our users. I always say I cannot engineer the human out of our, what we do. We can put up a lot of software, we can put up a lot of hardware, but it's the end user that is our first line of defense, and our most important line of defense. So we spend a lot of time educating our users, not only staff, but obviously council as well, because you all become very big targets the minute you come on board. Our second line of defense, obviously, is software, keeping up our patches. Our third line of defense is backups. We spent a considerable amount of time on our backups and a considerable amount of effort making sure they're as secure as possible. making sure they're as secure as possible. And then data and credential theft prevention. We are in the process of rolling out multi-factor authentication to help reduce some of the likelihood of credential theft prevention. We also, we adhere to the best practices and we do do it above and beyond those stated standards. Some of you have seen this before. We do have mandatory cybersecurity, House Bill thirty-eight thirty-four in the eighty-six legislature. Every single, every single employee as well as all elected officials have to go through mandatory cybersecurity training. I also do routinely do phishing tests. Our baseline was nineteen percent fail when we first started, and that was at level one. That was your typical, you know, African prince has a bunch of money for you, just send him some information. We are now up to the point where I'm very proud we are single-digit fail and I am using the highest level of scrutiny in our phishing tests, the highest level of complexity. If employees do click a link, they do get additional training classes. We do have a clicker section. But I spend a lot of time rewarding and praising. So just to tell the story, recently in utility billing, we had a engineering, social engineering. Someone had called to say that they had changed their account information and wanted the utility billing money to be sent to them. And our employee was just, she was like, this just doesn't sound right. They did follow up with an email. She didn't touch a thing. She immediately called help desk. And we were able to determine that, yes, it was a highly sophisticated social engineering. We were, nothing got in, but we scrubbed everything just to be on the safe side. And then I was quick to give her an on-the-spot award and tell her that she is our first line of defense. And if you have recently read about the DCAD, it was a click. It was a click on an email. Was the way they were getting it. That was the Dallas.
Terran County suffered one too.
Yes, yeah. So when you, if you ever ask me what keeps me up at night, it's one click. This is just some more data. Like I said, some of the stuff we put in recently to help us monitor what we are getting. So our email, we actually reject about 5,000 emails phishing attempts a week. That's just in one week. And then just really want to again praise my team that we made a goal to have ninety-nine point nine percent uptime in all of our systems, and we have done that for the last three years straight. So some of the projects that we are currently working on, of course, we've talked about this before, is the Denko nine-one-one move. I'm very happy to announce that we actually have boots on the ground and equipment in there. We just had fiber run this morning. And we are quickly going to be moving equipment over. And then we just got really good news on dispatch that they have actually set us up so that it'll just be plug and play. So once we move the, if dispatch needs to relocate, they'll be able to just plug in their laptops and have access directly to our network that we're setting up over there. Do you have any questions?
Where is that physical?
That is at the Denton County nine-one-one, their auxiliary building. It's actually a hardened facility. It's made to withstand an F-five tornado. It has dual generator backups and it's, it is as good as any colo in Dallas for sure. And we get that for no additional cost to use. We have an entire rack given to us to create, and so we are moving all our backups over there. It has, unfortunately, there was a lot of moving pieces. It was, but we're getting, I feel like we're getting to that last mile.
What do you need?
To be able to sleep at night? No, actually, like I said, you all have been very, very gracious. Everything that we've been able to bring through the budget process has been justified and you all have supported us. We are, as you know, I tend to recycle our equipment and try and get our very last ounce of it, out of it. So as we replace new equipment in the main server core, we move that older equipment to our backups and then that equipment we move to Denko. So we went through, and the only thing that costs a little bit more is that extended maintenance on the older equipment. But how old's that particular? Or at least seven years, seven or eight years? Yeah, so we definitely want to try and get as much use out of all the equipment that we've been blessed to be given.
I have a question.
Yes.
For the external systems we use, or we use clouds, if things go up and down through third parties and all. Have we had any breaches when those have been hacked? And if so, how is the people affected notified?
We have, sorry. I'm a really superstitious person. We have not had, we have had one incident and the incident involved emails and exchange. And we have not had any incidents that have involved data.
Okay.
Great. All right. In that case, I will make my exit. Thank you.
All right. Item number three, clarification on consideration items on today's contributing agenda. Does anybody have any clearances or need clarification on anything?
On item fifteen, consider the resolution rejecting all bids. It said that thirty thousand was for engineering and construction. How much was already spent on engineering?
A little bit under fifteen thousand.
Okay, so we were looking for bids for a sidewalk for fifteen thousand? And so when it, my next question is, is, um, what is the cost to maintain the trail until it can be replaced?
I don't have that number before you, but I know it's expendable.
Okay.
It's only in periods of heavy rain where we have to go and remediate it.
Next question is, is, is it realistic that a new bid's going to come in at fifteen thousand even when it's rebid as part of a larger public works project?
Um, I would say probably not to this market. I would say a more line with about thirty thousand double. That couldn't be for sure.
And will that, I guess, will address those prices or that expectation in open?
Or we don't do the project. We shelved it.
Okay.
What's the size of that fell?
I don't want to guess, but I can send it out.
Just, just guess, guess.
On your feet?
Probably a hundred.
Hundred linear feet?
Yeah.
By?
A wide.
Five foot.
High five foot?
Are you concrete man?
I think product that's small, it's going to always be higher.
Yeah, it's a very small project.
Unless you find a good contractor for that price. But I would say right now, yeah, probably somewhere twenty thousand dollars.
Numbers are all over the place.
Yeah.
Construction costs.
Yes, they are.
Really hard to put a finger on it.
Thanks, sir.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. So moving on, I think we have to go into closed session. Those that are not cleared, you have to leave. Council will meet in closed session, discuss following item four, number four, A, Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney concerning pending or contemplated litigation. And on any regular session, work session, agenda item requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation or discussion of said item. Item four, B, Section 551.089, deliberation regarding security devices and security audits. And item number four, C, Section 551.074, personnel deliberate employment and valuation of city manager and city secretary, going into closed session at six thirty-six.
I call this meeting to order.
Thank you. Give a warm welcome to our mayor for the day, Ms. Charlie Hill. She's a fourth grader at Highland Village Elementary and she's going to be serving with us tonight. So, thank you, good evening, welcome to Highland Village City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the 26th and the meeting is called to order at 7:05 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. And at this time, please join Councilmember Feaster in leading our prayer and pledge.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon our families, our health and our continued well-being. As we gather here tonight, we pray and ask for your wisdom and guidance as we consider this evening's agenda. We ask that you guide us so we may continue to serve in good faith towards each other and represent the best of our community's interests. We ask that you continue to watch over our city staff, our first responders and see them safely home to their families at the end of their day. We pray you watch over and protect our military personnel home and abroad and keep them safe as they serve to protect us. In your most blessed name we pray, amen.
Do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and
Thank you, Mr. Feaster. Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, mayor and council reports on items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. City council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they want to report?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Remember that Friday, March 29th, the city has closed in observation of
Remember that Friday, March 29th, the city has closed in observation of Good Friday. Thursday, March 28th, at 10:00 AM, the DCTA board meeting is on Zoom. Of course, March 31st is Easter. On April 1st, at 8:30 at Sippin's, don't forget to have coffee with our fabulous mayor. April 4th, we have the 7 o'clock PM zoning board of adjustment meeting in council chambers. April 9th, we've got the 6 o'clock Board of Ethics meeting at the Robert and Lee DeValt Center, competing with our next city council meeting. And April 13th, this is the big one for all you people who love paper and need it shredded. Paper shredding day, Pilot and Old Park, 2 to 5. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else have anything? I want to take a moment to recognize one of our former council members whose birthday is today. Tom Heslop, if you're watching, happy birthday. And with that, we'll move on to item number... Oh, we do have, we have a proclamation. You want to take a walk with me? Let's go. Yeah, bring it with you. So, did you decide which part was your favorite part of the tuber? Yeah? What was it? Both of them? Oh, that's an answer, politically correct answer. Hey, you know what? You've got a future as a mayor. All right, so, this is for you. I'm going to give you the nice, pretty blue folder. This you can keep and you can get it put in a frame with your name tag. If you get your mom to spend the money to have a nice frame. So, this is a proclamation, whereas the city of Highland Village is served by and is proud to support the Lewisville Independent School District, and whereas the city of Highland Village recognizes that current LISD students are the future leaders of our city, county, state, and nation, and whereas Highland Village Elementary School has provided Highland Village students in grades kindergarten through 5th grade with a high-quality education, I can vouch for that. And whereas the city of Highland Village offered a mayor-for-the-day opportunity to one lucky student, and Highland Village Elementary 4th grade student Charlie Hill was the successful recipient, now therefore I, on behalf of the city council and city staff, I, Daniel Jaworski, mayor of the city of Highland Village, do hereby congratulate and recognize Charlie Hill as mayor for the day in the city of Highland Village. Yay! Somebody going to take, get a picture? Let's hold this up so she can see. I'm going to just put this right here. It's the 10% rule. Did you have fun? Yeah? Did you learn anything? Nothing too hard, right? Easier than math? Good. I'll get down on that knee so that we're the same height. All right. You want to come back up with me? All right. I always wonder if that does any good or they can just still see the top of that. Just a little hump over the top of the monitor. Did you get to meet Ollie? So, you got pictures so you can show your friends? All right, moving on to item number nine, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens.
Mayor Scott Kristin has a report first, then I've got a few items after that.
Thank you, Paul. Mayor, council. City of Highland Village Public Works Water System temporarily converted the disinfectant used in the distribution system from chloramine to free chlorine. The conversion began on March 18th and will continue through April 16th. During this period, you may experience taste and odor changes associated with this type of temporary disinfectant conversion. In order to achieve this process, the city terminated the use of surface water and is now base-loading the water supply from our existing groundwater wells. Groundwater is softer than surface water and will leave the slick feeling that you feel on your skin. A free chlorine conversion occurs when the water system that typically uses chloramine removes the ammonia needed to form a chloramine disinfectant from the treatment process. The disinfectants, the water, with only chlorine. Chlorine is more effective than chloramine in activating certain types of bacteria. Excess ammonia, which can accumulate in a chloramine-treated distribution system over time, is a source of food for specific types of bacteria that are harmless to people. These bacteria can make it difficult for public water systems to maintain a disinfectant residual, which means that microorganisms that are harmful to people can grow. The chlorine conversion is a common practice by many public water systems throughout the country to reduce the number of the bacteria so that satisfactory disinfectant residual can be maintained throughout the distribution system throughout the year. The process converts the ammonia, I'm sorry. Chlorine conversion can be used as a preventative strategy or to stop nitrification altogether. The micro, the microprocess that converts ammonia and similar nitrogen compounds into nitrates and nitrates, which can diminish water quality and provide a false disinfection residual. Properly conducted free chlorine conversions can often cause the water to have a different taste and odor. And when using chloramine for disinfection, the customer will likely be able to notice the difference, which we are experiencing. There are no health effects associated with the change in taste and odor. Once the water system returns to using the chloramine as a disinfectant, the taste and odor of the water will return to normal. Although customers may be concerned about taste and odor changes, no associated health risks are expected or being experienced during the temporary conversion. Additionally, the city of Highland Village potable water continues to meet or exceed all federal and state mandates. We included information about this disinfection conversion process through a press release in the March and upcoming April issues of the utility bill inserts, several editions of the email newsletter, The Villager, and on social media, and created a specific page on the city website. Also, the community impact newspaper did a story on the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kristin. Mr. Stevens, anything else?
Mayor, just to follow up with that, because there had been so much discussion about the taste of the water and the different smell, we wanted to make sure we had that information out there. So, thank you, Scott, for doing that. And Lloyd did put some more information out online today as well.
All right.
A couple of other things. First, this is the last week for residents to take our satisfaction survey. The responses have been very good. We want to make sure everyone who wishes to participate has the opportunity. It's been live since February 22nd. We've shared the link and information on the survey with our residents via press release, a graphic link on our website, and the February and March utility bill insert, emailed it out four times with the Villager newsletter, and shared on all of our social media channels. We encourage those who have not yet taken it to do so this week. It takes about 15 to 20 minutes, and the link can be found at highlandvillage.org/survey. And as you've noticed, the contractor is making good progress on the traffic signal at the Highland Village Road Brazos-Holland Shores intersection. The work began on January 22nd, and they are ahead of schedule. The Highland Shores asphalt overlay and crosswalk at Community Center Drive is also underway. This project will include some drainage work, pavement replacement, and a new crosswalk light and notification system. Highland Shores Boulevard will be overlaid with asphalt from the intersection of Briar Hill to Highland Village Road. And it also consists of repairing the asphalt road failures, milling a portion of the old asphalt paving, adding a section of bike lane on the eastbound section, and reconfiguring the lane strip into calm traffic flow in the area. Notice to proceed was given on March 4th, and the contract has 180 days to complete this project. The next Highland Village Business Association quarterly luncheon is Tuesday, April 9th at 11:30. And it will be in the Sergeant Dennis Oliver Event Center at Doubletree Ranch Park. And we're going to have a representative from the retail coach, and they will be presenting the latest retail and restaurant trends and the outlook for the future. And details can be found at thvba.com. I also want to announce that the Rotary Club of Highland Village is doing a Taste Around the Village, and it's going to be at the shops at Highland Village on April 5th from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Admission is $50 for a ticket, and sponsorships are also available. Attendees will enjoy all-you-can-eat tastings from top restaurants in and around Highland Village, complemented by a selection of beverages available for donations. The evening will also feature raffles auctions, live entertainment, promising an unforgettable experience. And they are using this as a fundraiser for some of their charities, which include Ranch Hands Rescue, Bob's House of Hope, Children Advocacy Center of North Texas, Rise Adaptive Sports, and Casa for Children in Denton County. And that will be held in the location where the Spirit Halloween store is. They've done a lot of work in there to make this a great event. So, if you want information, go to hvrotary.org, and you can find ticket sales and information there.
Thanks, sir.
And that's it.
Thanks, sir. All right, moving on to item number 10, visitor comments. We're addressing visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address the city council must complete a speaker's request form and return it to the city secretary. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted in discussing and taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business and to provide all visitors the opportunity to speak, the mayor may impose a three-minute limit on any person addressing council. Mrs. Miller, did anybody request? All right. Moving on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and a vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from the agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. The items on consent tonight are number 11, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on February 27th, 2024. Consider Resolution 2024-3115 authorizing a contract for construction services with NBC Services LLC for renovation of the existing concession area at the Sergeant Dennis Oliver Event Center. Item number 13, consider Resolution 2024-3116, awarding and authorizing a contract with O&amp;A Classic Coatings and Paintings Corporation for the Oak Street Ground Storage Tank Repainting Project. Item number 14 has received the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Item 15, consider Resolution 2024-3118, rejecting all bids for the Village Park and Market Trail Connection project. And item number 16 has received budget reports for a period ending January 31st, 2024. Is there any discussion needed for anything on the agenda items included on consent? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Feaster.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items 11 through 16 as read.
All right, so, motion by Mr. Feaster. Anybody with a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vierenza. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to action agenda. Item number 17 is about closed session. We did meeting, closed session, discussed personnel issues, but no action was taken. And so, item number 18, conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance 2024-1311, amending the planned development regulations as set forth in ordinance number 04-954 relating to the development and use of Lot 3C Block A Valley Ridge Center located at 2005 Valley Ridge Court. This is the first of two reads. So, I'll have you do your part, and then I'll open the meeting. Is that right?
Sure.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, council. An application has been received for site, or seeking approval of a site plan to construct two storage buildings on each, on a separate lot. The property is currently zoned, PDR, planned development retail. In accordance with ordinance 04-954, the storage buildings are permitted with the current zoning. Both lots will share a mutual, a mutual access fire lane easement in order to comply with city ordinances. However, the property owner is requesting an exception to the foundation plantings for the lot located at 2005 Valley Ridge Court. This is the lot that would front Valley Ridge. The property abuts Valley Ridge and is visible to the public view. City attorney has drafted a revision to the ordinance for your consideration. As of the date of this briefing, March 21st, staff has not received any inquiries about the request. At the February 20th, 24, 2024 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the commission recommended send the draft ordinance as presented to city council for approval with a vote of 5 to 0. And with that, you can open the public hearing.
All right, so, anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing must complete a speaker's request form or return it to the city secretary. And speakers will not be permitted to speak about matters which are not germane to the item being considered. In order to expedite the flow of business and provide everyone the opportunity to speak, there'll be a three-minute limitation on any person addressing the city council. During your three minutes, the timer light will remain green, and when you have one minute remaining, the light will turn yellow. Please be respectful of everyone in attendance. I'll open the public meeting at 7:24? Or is it 7:23? 23. 7:23, we're open. Mrs. Miller, anybody sign up to speak? All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing at 7:24. Mr. Kristin, anybody have any questions on council? Mr. Feaster?
Yeah, so, as I understood from the literature, we're asking for an exception, or they're asking for an exception to the existing PD for the foundation plantings. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Per the code as it's written, or per the PD, would they be required to have the shrubs along the property line as well as the foundation plantings?
They're not required to have a landscape buffer, no.
Okay, so, they're providing the landscape buffer, if you will?
Yes.
Instead of the foundation plantings?
Right, what they're at, yes. The current code requires foundation planning for anything, any storage buildings that front the public gradeway, Valley Ridge, what their garage doors are facing the frontage. So, they have a piece of parking lot and some parking spaces in between the building and fronting Valley Ridge. And they installed a landscape buffer of where they would add more than just foundation plantings. There's, there's a hedgerow of a head, like a boxwood type, and then, and some trees that would mature to be larger trees.
And there's one last question. There's a utility easement that runs along Valley Ridge. I assume those shade trees are going to be outside of the utility easement?
We'll work with them to place them, yeah.
All right. That's all I have. Anybody else? All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Wrong, number 19.
Oh, wait.
18, public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he did that. Okay. So, move, well...
Well, we have to consider the ordinance, right?
Yeah, we have to consider the ordinance, yeah.
Two issues here.
Yeah.
I think that we have to.
So, yeah, so entertain a motion to approve item number 18. Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve ordinance 20-20, excuse me, 2024-1311, amending the planned development regulations as set forth in ordinance number 04-954 relating to the development and use of Lot 3C Block A Valley Ridge Center located at 2005 Valley Ridge Court.
All right, a motion by Mr. Feaster. Mr. Kicksmiller?
I second that motion.
All right, I'm second by Mr. Kicksmiller. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to number 19. Consider Resolution 2024-3117 approving a detailed site plan for lots 2C and 3C Block A Valley Ridge Center located at 2005 and 2035 Valley Ridge Court. Mr. Kristin?
Put that back so I can get the votes, just to make sure it goes unanimous?
Yes. Correct? Did everybody raise their hand?
Yes.
Okay.
My hand, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, yeah. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, Mayor, council. An application has been received for approval of a site plan to construct two storage buildings on separate lots adjacent to each other that will share a mutual access fire lane easement in order to comply with city ordinance. The property is currently zoned, PDR, and storage buildings are permitted use within this current zoning. Site plan package includes site plan, building elevations, lighting plan, landscape plans, and signage plans. At the February 20th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the commission recommended setting the site plan forward as submitted by city council for approval with a vote of 5 to 0. With that, I do have the property owners here, Mr. Paul Bosco and Mr. Paul Bosco Jr., and we'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Counsel, Mr. Feaster?
Yes, Mr. Kristin, on the site plan, as it... On the site plan, as it was presented, there is a, I think, 148-foot handrail along, let's say, the northern property. What's the function of that handrail? And I guess is it related to maybe a barrier? It's hard to tell without a grading plan what's happening there, but I'm just curious to the intent of that handrail.
Obviously, an elevation difference there that's greater than 32 inches.
Okay.
Which would require ADA handrail.
And then is that same condition present on the south side of the property line? Because there is also a wall called out there, I believe.
No.
And maybe it's under 30 inches at that point?
Well, the south side is only a foot 18 inches, maybe.
Okay. So not a similar condition, okay.
They don't get to see that.
And then I just had one more question. It's hard to tell. What is happening at the dumpster location? Obviously, it's an enclosed dumpster. There's a curb inlet on the back of that. How is that functioning around that corner?
All easements on this property were done as separate instruments. We did, in order to allow this some functionality and to foster development, allow a dumpster enclosure on a non-pressurized pipe easement. The drainage is designed to go around it and drop into the inlet behind it with an installation of a grate on the inlet throat.
Does the drainage flow west or does it flow east out of that structure?
It flows to the east.
Okay, so it goes, takes a turn to the north and then east along that?
Right, the whole property collects a little bit of stormwater off of the public gradeway and drains from west to east.
Okay.
And finally makes it to the regional detention facility on the A1 storage site. Well, it's not A1 storage anymore, to the northeast.
Last question, sorry, I lied. The two handicap accessible, or excuse me, the one accessible space on Lot 2C, is that located in front of a door? All the way at the northeast corner of the site? There's that one striped aisle in the one spot?
Do you know, Paul, off the top of your head, is there the access to main door there? No. It's not a door there, but there is a sidewalk to get to an entry.
Okay, but the space and the access aisle is not in front of a garage door, I guess?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the dumpster and the drainage, you said it goes around the structure? So is it not contained in the drainage easement?
The dumpster is inside the easement.
So does the water go around the easement or through the easement?
It'll go around the dumpster site, yeah.
Does that need, water need to be in an easement?
It's still contained in the easement.
Okay, I was just looking at the drawing. It just seemed like the dumpster took up the whole thing. On building lots 3C, will you be painting an accessible pathway from the handicap to the building? Because I don't see one.
Yeah, there's ADA, there's an ADA walkway all the way in front of the building.
I can't.
State your name.
Paul Bosco Jr. Yeah, when we designed it, there's a, that little walkway there is all ADA compliant.
So is it the one that goes, but how, when they cross the street, you, I think you're supposed to have it striped, is it the, on top of the utility easement, is that your walkway that's speckly hatched?
Yeah, where it's striped. Are you talking about between the two buildings running east and west?
From the furthest handicap spot on the left going to the building, the accessible path is candy cane striped. How do they get from the handicap to the building?
There's no curb.
We can add.
Will you be striped? That's what I'm just saying, because they're going to come and you'll get your ADA, and I'm just making sure. Are you striping that to get from point A to point B?
Yeah.
That's, that was my question. I just, I see that a lot, so I just wanted to point it out. That's it.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Cox?
Yeah, was there, I didn't see one in the drawings. Was there a geotech report included with the site plan?
No, sir.
No? I was just wondering, because of the soils that we have, you have six inches of compactive hydrated lime at 6%. And that's a, that's a good standard to have, but in our soil, it's, it seems sometimes geotecs, depending on the spot, have a difference in opinion. So maybe instead of 6%, or 6%, it's 10% on eight inches or nine inches. So I just wanted to check because I didn't see one.
We do have the geotech for the FM 407 construction that we compared to, and the 6% is sufficient.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right.
One more question. I forgot. Does it call out the eight-inch pavement underneath the dumpster? Okay, I guess I'm missing it. Is it on the, is it in the engineering plans?
I'm sorry?
Is it in the engineering plans?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's why. Just that constant slamming on top of a pipe. That's it.
Okay.
They have a, I believe he said in planning his own, is a two-foot-high stone wainscot around the buildings, correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, and that stone matches the buildings behind it and around it. I think you said that you matched the same stone in color to the existing buildings that are there.
The material data board that they submitted is very, very close to the storage building that was just built to the north of that. Matter of fact, I think they're using the same stone.
Right. I thought, I thought that's what he said in the planning zoning commission meeting. Was that also a two-foot-high wainscot?
The building to the north of them, of this site, did the whole elevation in stone?
That, that's right, they did. The other ones behind it had a wainscot with some pillars designed with stone.
Correct.
Between the stucco walls, right? The material used in this building is metal?
Yes.
All the way around, top and sides?
Yes.
What prompted the metal as opposed to being consistent with the other buildings around it to make it more of a congruent development?
We actually went ahead and matched it to the building next to us, the Taylor Building to the north. That's a metal building as well.
Correct, but it also had a full, full stone face.
Right, yeah, well, it's, we originally came in with full metal. We actually matched the stone, took the exact, to kind of make it.
For the wainscot.
Yeah, for the wainscot. And our property goes kind of around, you know, there's more exposure, I guess, so we went ahead and put it all the way around.
Right, and that's kind of where I'm going. You do have quite a bit of exposure. I know you're asking for plantings along the roadway. That would buffer a little bit of it, but when you're, when you're either on Valley Ridge Court or you're on 407, you can see that building quite well. And the, the front building is offset a little bit from the road, so you've got a pretty good view from the roadways. And that's really kind of where I'm looking at, but what prompted the metal as opposed to a more congruent look and making a more cohesive development?
There was nothing really besides the weight. We just dressed up the building. I mean, that would.
And can we, can we ask them for consideration of more congruent, at least on the Valley Ridge side?
As far as you want us to do, like a?
Either the full stone or the other buildings, I believe they had stucco, kind of picture-framed, if you will. They have stone pillars and then they have a stucco wall. It breaks it up a little bit, gives it a little bit more dimension and look.
That was kind of the reason for us to add the wainscot. I think originally they didn't really require any stone. And that's kind of why we brought it there, was to dress up that base. And like I said, we kind of went all the way around the building too, because John Taylor's, you don't drive around the sides or the back as much, so we tried to kind of make it that way. Without having to do full stone, we went ahead and.
Yeah, and, and the wainscot looks, you know, I appreciate that, but I'm looking at above that wainscot. I mean, you've got a lot of metal here, right, that we're looking at. And for me, it looks almost like it's a sore thumb with all the metal when everything else is a little bit more, it's got a little bit more characteristic to it, if you will. And I know that you're going to block that building to the north of you once this is placed, right? Because it sets back as well a little bit, a little bit more than these you're going to.
Yeah, you'd see it from Valley Ridge.
Yeah.
We'd be seeing the same amount.
Yeah.
Traditionally, the storage buildings are built, metal is one behind.
Right.
So, yeah, we just tried to dress it up and make it look better, so it was uniformly, like, we took their colors and their stone and tried to really make it, when you come down that road, so it doesn't stick out.
Right.
Color versus material, to try and make the benefit. I mean, from a cost standpoint.
Yeah. Yeah, obviously.
For storage, you got to get in, get in line for that, and we tried to do our best to dress it up at the same time as keep the cost in line and. I guess the original design didn't have a wainscot.
Right, and so that was added.
That was us trying to, to dress it up at the same time.
And I'm trying to go one little bit further if I can to get you to go.
Yeah.
Even go up straight up on, on the, between the, between the overhead doors, just in those there, go straight up with the stone to give it that characteristic that kind of blends with the rest of the development behind and around you, and makes it a little bit more cohesive, if you will.
Yeah, from a budget standpoint, that just wasn't how it was designed, so that's kind of where we were at.
Mm-hmm.
We tried to dress it up with the wainscot to exceed the minimum expectation.
Yeah. I just wanted you, I just want you to exceed a little bit more.
I don't have a budget in there to do that, no, I don't. My, my efforts were to make the colors there, to add some stone, to kind of, like you said, not make it a sore thumb, make it cohesive, synergistic to the colors and materials. It's the same materials being used next door.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kicksmiller?
I just, you know, compliment on having the trees along the road. I think that's going to mitigate and soften that entire approach, okay?
And that was our effort.
And so I think that kind of offsets, you know, whether the stone comes up a certain height, and I think it complements pretty well with the existing building there and everything around it.
And the site does sit a little bit lower.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's, it does kind of sit back in there. Like I said, we tried to dress it up. We tried to put some, some trees and the bushes and everything there to kind of dress it up.
And you are, you know, the whole area is, you know, the storage facility behind the, the retail anyway, and the people that are driving up and down are to go into the shopping center, so again, glad to see that empty lot get filled up, both of them. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Is there a project start date and duration? Project start date and duration? None yet?
Sorry, back on building one, the site information table has roughly 2,000 square feet of office space. However, looking at the elevation, it looks similar to building two along the face. Where is the office space? And I guess where is the office space relative to the accessible parking space, which I would presume needs to be located near the office entry? Does that make sense? So on, on building one, right, the site information has 1,928 square feet of office space, and the remainder is 8,800 of storage.
Are you building one?
Whereas building two doesn't have any office space. So my question is, where is the office space for building one, and how does that relate to the accessible parking?
Building one. That is.
Which one's one? This one or this one?
That's building two. That's building one.
Where's your, where's your office space in here?
Well, we'd be, we're just going to make little offices off these door entrances on this building. This one's certainly.
It's, it's right directly in front of the ADA space.
There's walk-through doors, yeah.
Okay.
Those walk-through doors would be, they would tie the offices into those walk-through doors.
Okay, so is it, I don't know a better way to do this, unfortunately, but assuming this is the facade of the building, is that the office space right there?
Yes.
Because that's where it would have to be.
Yeah.
So is it marked office or is it somebody's private door into the storage? Because it, it doesn't look any different than the rest of the doors, I guess. Would it be clearly marked as office or a sales office? I assume it's a sales office, right?
Well, we didn't say it was sales or, it was just a general office.
It's just office space?
Somebody had office in there with it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, quick question, just going on the office space. Are you saying that each of the individual door units, where they each have their own individual door, there's going to be office space within each of those?
If they elected to have it, yeah. That's what we were making it.
Okay, so each of them could be individual businesses, then?
Yeah, traditionally, yeah, we're, we're just going to lease them as storage, but yeah.
Could be a finish-out, is that what you're saying?
I mean, if they could put an office in there, we, that's why we left it in there for office.
There could be an option of finish-out.
Right.
For each storage building.
Anything else?
Does that mean no office will be allowed in the other building? Is this more like flex space?
Yeah, I mean, lease it for storage, if you've got stuff to store there, that's what you'd be leasing for.
Okay, I mean, I didn't know if it was, if you have offices, so the one building, nobody can add an office or anything.
We don't have any planned, is it right? We don't have any planned for it right now.
Step a little closer to the mic.
Sorry, we, we don't have any planned or designed for it right now.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, as office comes in, will you be adjusting your parking appropriately? Because it sounds like this is a flex space type situation where they store stuff, but they could also build out an office on the inside.
Yeah, right now, we're not planning on an office, so we built it according to that. That's how we're presenting it and.
So then, Mr. Kristin, just to piggyback onto that, what does the city do if, what control do we have, and not to hijack your question?
No, go ahead.
But if they did want to repurpose building two with any office space, the ratio on the parking changes.
Right.
It becomes more dense and doesn't look like they have room for that parking. So what does the city do as far as not allowing them to repurpose any of that?
Right.
Do we even have that ability? Because.
Yes, when they permit a finish-out, to propose any kind of office space, we do run the calculation for any additional parking needed or any additional ADA parking needed. If it doesn't meet the requirements, ADA requirements, or the city ordinance for, for parking, the permit is denied.
Okay. What about five years from now?
The permit will be denied.
We're assuming, you know, there's an assumption then that if they were, if they wanted to modify it to include office space, that they would come back to get a permit to do a remodel then, right?
Right. Yeah, either way, finish-out has to be permitted, which will be reviewed, and, and parking would be part of that review.
How many water and sewer stubbaths are there in each building? That'll tell you right now if they can do a finish-out.
One.
So there's just one? Okay, because if you can't connect a water and sewer, you're not going to have a.
Exactly.
Build out. So that was my question.
All right, anything else from anybody else?
Make motion?
Entertain a motion?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-3117, approving a detailed site plan for lots 2C and 3C Block A Valley Ridge Center located at 2005 and 2035 Valley Ridge Court.
Motion by Mr. Kicksmiller. Anybody want to make a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Nelson? So motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion needed? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Seven zero, carries. Thank you all. All right, so item number 20, consider resolution 2024-3119, awarding and authorizing a contract with Pavcon Public Works LP for the 2022 Street Improvement Projects Phase Two. Mr. Kristin, it's your night tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. In December 2021, a bond package was approved to construct some streets, drainage and parks projects. $8.85 million was issued for streets and drainage projects. Several streets were identified as part of that bond package to be reconstructed with full depth reclamation. Phase one of that project is completing. Phase two now has been designed and bid, and we have received, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight bids, with Pavcon Public Works being the lowest responsible bid. And we have sent out some letters to affected residents upon approval to expend the construction funds, there'll be another letter going out, which will incorporate Ms. Hurst's suggestion of a QR code and directing folks to the city website, which has the CIP information. The recommendation is to approve authorizing city manager to, city manager to negotiate a contract with Pavcon Public Works for this project.
I have a question. So the difference between Pavcon Advanced Paving is three grand. Were there times to do the project and all similar days of work and whatnot?
It's all outlined in the specifications.
So it was, I mean, neck and neck, is what I'm asking, it's just a very close fit. I didn't, okay. My next question is, is during this QR card, QR codes and all, will there be a information per project on the webpage that lets them know what stage it's at, who to contact, if there's insurance issues, property issues, and as it goes along the path of construction, where it's at and what's upcoming?
Yes, along with the written CIP portion of project updates, there's also a map that's been developed through the GIS folks that, that you can hover over a certain area, a certain street, and it'll, it'll give kind of a, an update where it's at and a picture of what's going on. So if it's being pulverized, it'll have a pulverizing picture.
Okay, cool.
And what have you, so.
That's just in my neighborhood, and everybody knows where I live, so I'm just double checking.
Anyone else?
That map is attached, you said attached to the QR code as well? There's a link to the map within that notice that we're sending out.
It'll be on the, part of the CIP website.
Yes, perfect.
QR code's more for the phone, we'll give the link.
I was going to say, the map is, personally, I love the map. I think it's great and a great communication to the city. I just, I don't think enough people know about it, and just be a good update all the way around, the more we can push that information.
Can we put the QR, do we have construction signs out? Can we put the, I noticed in other cities and all, they have little QR codes, so when you're zipping by, you can.
Yeah, that's what we need.
A construction sign?
People scanning QR.
You know, your little sign that says whatever, well, yeah, but it'll, if people want to know as they're getting home and all, it's, I found it very handy in other places. I don't know if that would be part of it.
I don't have construction signage in the, in the project, if that's what you're asking.
No, I meant, sometimes they say, you know, the project here, it's got the sign.
So you're talking about having like sheets of paper attached to the construction sign to where if someone wants information, they can grab it from a box?
No, sometimes it's on, it's made in, built into the city sign, it's got a little QR code, just no different than if you see the I-9 or the whatever, and it just, you know, sports or whatever, that's all I was asking, so they could easily access it. Obviously, why not driving, but it just makes it easy, I just, it seems to be an easy way for people these days, even the older folks, to communicate. And that's it.
Anybody else? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve resolution 2024-3119, awarding and authorizing a contract with Pavcon Public Works LP for the 2022 Street Improvements Projects Phase Two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kicksmiller, a second by Mr. Fierenza, any further discussion needed? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to item 21, late work session. Status reports and current projects in discussion on future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they want to report or future agenda items to discuss? Yes? Yes, sir.
Real quick, for a future meeting, I would like, we're getting that time of year, summer, I'd like to see what we have overall in our city charter rules, regulations of pool maintenance. I know there's not a lot we can do in regards to telling someone what they can do with their property, and that's, and that's perfect, but in regards to maintaining almost a healthy and safe area on the outskirts of those pools, just where we stand on that, where the city stands, maybe even where the county stands as we move closer to summer.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Stevens, do you have anything, projects or anything you need updated or already done? All right, so you want to, want to gavel us out? We'll say, you'll say, this concludes the city council meeting, and then pound it really hard, like really hard. Say this, this concludes our city council meeting.
This concludes our city council meeting.
Good job, all right? We're adjourned at 7:53.